We'll restart our meeting tonight. We're going to have the pledge and we're going to have an invocation. And the pledge is going to be given or led by Miss Connie Rish, Mrs. Connie Rish.
Yes.
Is that right? And the invitation by Reverend Wayne Blair. So with that, I understand. Connie?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, free, open, liberty, and justice for all.
Do remain standing, please.
Almighty, we come before your presence to seek help, to seek help for this community, for the individuals who have been elected, who try to help this community along. May your spirit reside with us in the community and with these people. Would you help them, please, to make decisions that are not easy to make? Would you help them to think things through, which that's not easy to do? Would you help them to withstand all of the things that people say about them? Because any time we're in positions of authority, these things happen. And we would appreciate that you would help with this matter. And we want to turn our attention to the community itself. We would ask that you would give the people in this community a spirit of optimism, that there would be some things they could hold on to, and that they would be more optimistic than we have been. We praise you and we offer thanks, and we ask it in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
Call the meeting door. First order of business will be real call.
Councilwoman Rish, present. Councilman Weber. Councilman Shomel.
Present.
Councilman Nobby.
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Present.
It's like the record shows, we have six council people present. We have a forum and we can do business. First order of business will be, we'll ask everybody to turn their cell phones to vibrate, go to the off position, please, during the meeting. And the second order of business will be the greeting of the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on, uh, 5th, 2014.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion to approve the minutes on the second. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We have the honor tonight to introduce Dr. Chad Coats. Uh, Dr. Coats, if you'll come forward to the podium. We have a young eye doctor, Dr. Yarian, and he went to college with Dr. Coats.
That's right.
And, uh, he brought Dr. Coats into the, his partner over here in the eye center, uh, right over here. I guess I could say just to the north of the New Hardee's Restaurant. So I would like to introduce to you, uh, Dr. Chad Coats. And, Dr. Coats, I'd like for you to tell the press and ask just a little bit about yourself.
Okay. Well, I graduated from Indiana University School of Optometry in 2008. Um, Dr. Yarian and I went to school together there. I spent the last, uh, six years in Bowling Green, Kentucky, um, in practice down there and learned a lot about the profession. Um, the laws are a little bit different in Kentucky than here, so I got a chance to do some different procedures and learn about some different procedures that hopefully will make their way up here into Indiana. Um, I'm a Hoosier. I'm from Bloomington, so it's good to be back here. It's definitely good to be, uh, out of the Bluegrass State and back in the Hoosiers.
I, uh, I asked him to go over tonight just to show you that we have, you know, they say all of our young people are leaving. We got young people coming. These are two young doctors over there that are just doing great, uh, working hard and, I think, did you tell me you rented a house? You bought a house or you already in the process?
Yeah, I'm renting a house off of 12th Street. Um, you know, just waiting on my house in Kentucky to sell, which should go through soon.
Yeah, you have to wait on those sites.
Yeah, and then hopefully I'll be able to buy a home here in Conrersville.
And tell us about your wife and children.
Um, I've got a two-and-a-half-year-old son. His name's Nolan. Uh, my wife, Ashley, we, we've been married about eight years, and we have one on the way as well that'll be due in December, so.
I got to meet his family, his mom and dad, when we had the open house over there last week, so I'd like for you to give him a hand. I do want you to be an official resident of our yard. So we, uh, we have a seal of the city that might be a little proud. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
And we won't, uh, make you stay enlisted, all this, if you don't want to, but we're certainly welcome.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Would, uh, would each one of your council people like to introduce yourself to Dr. Coats, please? Nancy?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to introduce yourself to Dr. Coats?
Oh, I'm Nessie Stevens.
I'm Tom Creach, District Four City Councilperson.
I'm Debbie Montgomery.
Dave Nobby?
I'm not Julie Grayson. I'm filling in. I'm only a tall one.
First deputy county treasurer.
I'm Fran Shomel.
President of the council.
Yeah.
I'm Connie Rish. I represent District One, and for the daytime, I'm at MRI tech at the Whitewater Valley Medical Center.
I'm John Baker. I'm the current city attorney and also a patient of Dr. Yarian's. I haven't seen him for a while.
Daryl, would you like to tell the young man who you are? He may need to know you.
I know him.
Oh, you know him?
I've already interviewed him.
Anybody else like to introduce themselves to Dr. Coats? The fire chief and the, uh...
I'm Dave Councilman, Police Chief.
I forgot the police chief up here. We're certainly glad to have you in town. The lady right behind you, you probably want to know, that's Ruby.
Hi, please.
David is the, uh, street superintendent. Thank you so much for coming tonight. All right, we'll get busy here with our business. Uh, under new business, we have a reimbursement, uh, $1,829.33 on bulletproof vests. That's usually not a problem. Uh, Resolution 2014-21, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept, um, Resolution 2014-21.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept Resolution 20-21, reimbursing the, the $1,829.33. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. This is pending orders 3118. This is an additional appropriation from the, uh, River Redevelopment Commission Fund. Uh, we have a public hearing, $1,500. As you know, the redevelopment took the old Fifth Third Bank and they spent some money on it. They have since sold it. So I'll open up a public hearing on the $1,500. Anybody out there have any discussion on the $1,500 for the old Fifth Third Bank through the redevelopment commission? Anybody at all? None appearing, I'll close the public hearing. And council, it's up to you.
So what was the $1,500 each for?
I think it was roof repairs and window repair. We won't be having any of these anymore because that, uh, that's been sold. And, uh, this afternoon at the Board of Works, we appropriated $3,500 to come out of, uh, which fund did that come out of?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand. Main Street.
The Main Street fund.
It was a loan of 2%.
And they're going to add to it, and I think it was $65,000 that the new owners are going to spend totally, so that puts us clean out. On pending orders 3118, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept pending orders 3118.
A second.
Got a motion and a second to pass pending orders 3118 on first reading. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and just sit on third and final? Second. Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules so we can consider pending orders 3118 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We can move forward if you like. Second. Did you get it? Got a motion and a second to consider pending orders 3118 on third and final reading, appropriating $1,500 into the redevelopment commission. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Department reports for the month of April, Air Force, Gene Worley. I don't see Gene tonight. EMS Commander, Dale Monson.
Do you want to talk about the ABS building?
Yes.
Okay, we've been in contact with, uh, our billing service, ABS Building out of, uh, Elkhart. They approached us a while back about, uh, upping our rates for our ambulance run, and we took it to the Board of Works this afternoon. They approved it and we're bringing it to you this evening to, uh, take it up a little harder. What it amounts to is that we want to change our mileage from $12 a mile to 16. Our ALS One will go from 600 to 1,100. Our ALS Two will go from 750 to 13, and our BLS will stay at 500.
Would you explain those ALS and BLS to the council?
ALS One is, uh, we can put you on a monitor, start an IV. Uh, ALS Two is the same thing, except you would be using medications along with that. And our BLS is just strictly, uh, normal, run, uh, using oxygen and stuff like that.
Dale, are these, are these prices kind of geared towards what Medicare will?
This won't affect Medicare, it, uh, just private insurance, and it's the, uh, a outreach of what the insurance company, private companies will pay.
Okay.
And this just brings us up to what they will pay.
Okay.
What would they take that?
I assume, just as soon as you approve it.
What percentage Medicare, Medicaid, and private, do you have any idea?
Uh, roughly, we're getting, uh, we're about 56% above the average on Medicaid on receiving it. And on, uh, our private, uh, private insurance is about 8% below what they should be paying, should be receiving. And by doing that, this should bring us up, roughly, it'll take us up to about, uh, $15,000 to $20,000. But more annually.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Well, I move that we, uh, approve these rates as, uh, recommended by the commander of the EMS.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the new rates for the EMS. Uh, any discussion? Anybody out there have any discussion? Not appearing, let's have a real call vote.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
It's 6-0 to, we will, uh, raise those rates. John, does that have to be an ordinance form?
No, you can do it in the minutes.
Okay. You got that. Go ahead and make your report.
Okay. Who will notify the company?
Dale will notify the company, and, uh, will probably take effect June 1st, uh, rather than try to switch here in a little month. Uh, when we went to the ambulance billing service, it really increased our, uh, our billing, and we're doing pretty well here. As you can see, the city share running that this month was $27,820.55 for what we're operating up there, that's pretty reasonable.
And we should get the ambulance back tomorrow.
Yeah, we have, we have to have a little heat up, but, uh, we gotta run it again.
We had a sensor go out of it on a call the other night. We had to tow it in, and Chris is getting it back together. Hope this evening, should have it back tomorrow morning.
They didn't blow the gasket, so did they?
No.
Oh, honey, that's good.
Any other questions?
No, I just want to mention that you've had no overtime in April.
Good job.
Nice to say something good.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Council Parks and Recreation, Mike is unable to be here tonight. If you look at the Parks and Recreation, I think I can answer any questions that you might have. The park has been under stress because we have so many, so much grass to cut, and as you know, it rains about every other day and sometimes three, four days in a row. And, uh, things are moving along. On your third page of your report, Summer Discovery, uh, rates first through six, uh, you guys know all about it. I think we, we had a TV program last Thursday night, Fran hosted. Fran, would you talk, like, talk a little bit about Summer Discovery?
Well, it's a great program. I, this is the fourth year for it, and we made some changes. We're going to have more adult supervision than we have had in the past. They, they hired three gals who have a little bit of experience of working in schools and with youngsters, so I think it should be, uh, should be a great thing. It's a $10 registration fee, and then it's $15 per day for the first child, 13 per day for the second, $11 per day for, uh, third child and up. And it'll be Monday through Friday, starts June the 2nd through Friday, August the 1st. They do a lot of fun things, uh, plenty of outdoor activities, daily exercise, swimming, reading. On Wednesdays, they go to the movies, they do crafts, they have special guest speakers, and a lot of, a lot of other things happen. So if folks would like to, uh, find out more about it and perhaps register their child, it's at the Miller Building at Roberts Park, that's the place to do it. They can call 825-5244 for any further information.
That's a great program. We served over 1,000 kids last summer.
Yes, it is.
On the third page of your paper, you'll see there, we're going to have swimming lessons. And then when my kids were little, I had three that I wanted to be sure they could swim. Uh, if you want your kids to learn to swim, you can call the same number, 825-5244. We'll be running one session, uh, starting June 10th to June 26th, and then we'll have a second section, session. The lessons are $35, and, uh, it'll make your kids, uh, know how to handle water, a little bit of safety in the water, and teach them how to swim, that's very important for young children. So that's available.
Mr. Mayor, you know the ages on that one?
Is there an age? I don't know, but, uh, what the age, it doesn't say on here, you need to call that number. I don't, I think the age is, uh, open, but I know they have classes for each group. If you need to have a party or do anything, you can call the park, and of course, we have two buildings available on all the shelters. And, uh, interested in that, uh, the park is, uh, in good shape. We're trying desperately to get the, uh, white. The vine will run the inside of the bay, and we'd like to have that done by the fair. We do it whenever we don't have to cut grass. It's been pretty tough, trying to get them all through ready, and all the things we've done. Police Department, David?
Oh, I have a question.
Question.
Yeah, I have a couple things. Um, the, um, truck repair, and it says insurance check?
Yes. I don't think we have the check yet.
Oh, okay.
We will have.
Okay. And, and something else, I, I really wish Mike was here, but I want to say it before I forget it. Um, I, a couple weeks ago, I mean, back before it started raining, it was nice. It's nice to see everybody using the park, and when you, when you drive by on Park Road, the, um, well, I don't know what that shelter's called up there, but, um, near, near Park Road, like 29.
Right there by the, where kids play?
Yes.
Like, come on, spill that.
Yeah, but, um, there's some picnic tables out in the grass area, and I noticed, I just, it caught my eye, and I guess it just seemed kind of strange to me that people pull in, their vehicles were parked in the grass area, like, right beside the picnic table. I, I guess I remember years ago when I was a kid, you didn't, you weren't allowed to pull into the grass. I mean, it seemed like there were posts and nowhere to really pull in. Are, are they supposed to be parking on the grass?
I don't know, but I will talk to Mike about that in the morning.
I, I noticed a lot of that. I mean, it's nice to see the people out, you know, getting food and, and sitting at a picnic table, but, I mean, especially with that pull-in there, that's fairly new within the last, you know, five years.
Probably where they throw horseshoes?
No, Park Road, Tom Park Road.
Oh, I'm probably...
Like, right across from 28th, just right up between...
South of, uh, Millard Building.
Yeah, just stopped in the Millard Building, yeah. I mean, you know, we're talking, what, 20, 30 feet from where you could park, and, and also when they, I think that there were even, there's, I've seen vehicles close to that shelter as well. I mean, you know, surely you can take stuff from your vehicles over without having to pull in there.
I've never noticed that. That, they shouldn't be doing that. I don't think Mike would like that.
I just didn't, yeah, I just didn't think there was ever really a place for them to be able to pull.
There's plenty of parking there.
Yeah, usually they park along the road. I've seen them park along the road, but not on the...
Yeah, so please, yeah, bring that to Mike's attention.
Another thing that Daryl brought to my attention, once we had opening day at the ball field, and we got that all going good, and we got tremendous amount of kids playing this year. Got a lot of people carrying guns down there, and he came up and discussed it with me. Uh, he said some of the mothers are fearful. And I said, "Well, I will ask the police maybe from time to time to check those permits because sure everybody's got a permit down there. There's not much we can do about it. If you've got a permit, you can carry it down and you can carry it openly, but it intimidates some of the mothers."
Uh, Mr. Baker?
Yes.
If I may, girl?
Yeah.
Um, I was thinking, a few years ago, we had passed an ordinance that there was to be no firearms on any city. Am I right, Dave?
Well, yeah, but the state law overruled that.
No, the Supreme Court overruled.
Oh, excuse me, the federal law.
Oh, okay.
Actually, it was the Supreme Court of Indiana.
Okay.
Rules, you couldn't prohibit that from...
Okay. My apologies. Okay.
If you have a gun permit, you can carry it, but, uh, we've always had a problem with there, uh, some guns, and then smoking on the stands, uh, some of our people that lead over there don't think that people should be smoking right there on the stands, right behind home plate. And I don't know if that's something you guys want to address eventually. Uh, that's up to you. You could bar smoking from over there if you wanted to. You know, I guess it's a poor image in front of young people, but, uh, that's something that's been brought to my attention, and I thought, you know, you are in charge over there, and it's something I would tell you about.
We didn't like to have dogs around there either.
No, we, we can control the dogs pretty good, uh, Daryl, and those guys, you know, but if it's something that you want to look at, I will appoint a committee to review it. I suppose we could have no smoking in the park if we wanted to. I know you can't smoke in the pavilion, you can't smoke in the amphitheater because it's a building, but when you're outside sitting right there at home plate, it's probably from here to, uh, the clock, and those people, I know our leaders are not happy with that. They, they asked me to bring it to your attention. Council Police Department.
Mayor, since you brought up about the guns, um, I want everybody to know that, uh, we've been on the Channel Three and the, and the newspaper and also, uh, uh, the radio in regards to gun safety class that, uh, we're putting on at the Central Police Crazy Building on the 3rd and the 4th of next month, and it'll start at, uh, 6:00 in the evening, go till 9:00, but you need to call myself or my secretary, Jackie, and we're trying to get 16 per class, two, two, soon as same class, we're just having one on Tuesday, one on Wednesday. It's $30, and, uh, then the following Saturday, on the 7th, I'll have you having a shoot where you get familiarized with it. I just wanted, uh, to get that out there, if anyone's interested.
What dates are those?
If it goes over, then we'll probably have one maybe every two months or whatever.
What were the dates on them?
The, uh, 3rd and the 4th, on Tuesday, Wednesday, starting at 6:00, but you need to let us know, because we want to keep it about 16, uh, per class starting out, uh, because it's, it's give more time to, to, uh, to give attention to, to people, a lower volume of people.
Does that qualify you to get the national permit?
No, that's just as a gun safety class for people who, uh, go out and get a personal protection permit. Also, you know, I understand why people are upset, because technically by law, you can carry it out in the open, but at the same time, you do make people feel uncomfortable. And, and so, uh, you know, you can carry concealed, and I would suggest people are going to go out in public like that to carry it concealed, because they walk into Walmart or something with a gun on their side, and, and, uh, an agent of, of that company, Walmart, comes up, one of the managers, and says, "Sir, you have, or sir or ma'am, you need to take that gun outside and put it in your car. It's not allowed in here. It's making our customers feel uncomfortable." And they come back saying, "Well, I got a personal protection permit for Indiana, I can carry it anyplace I want." No, they can. If they're on private property, or in, if, if, in like a store like that, and, and the agent of that company doesn't want you in the store with a gun on it because it's making people feel uncomfortable, you have to take it outside and put it up, or it was in your purse, or on your belt underneath a jacket or something where nobody could see it, nobody would know. And besides that, and this is for everybody listening, if you're in a grocery store or something, you're wearing a gun on your side, and, and somebody decides to rob that place and you go in there, they're going, you're not going to have the element of surprise, and just somebody's going to see you and you'll be the first one they take out. So it's just, just a little common sense. You have that privilege to wear a gun here in Indiana, and they have that, and you just need to have some common sense when you're wearing it.
Wouldn't they have to post the signs saying, you know, openly?
They can. Some restaurants do that, and a lot of people take offense to that. So I'm not here to debate that or anything else. I'm just saying that if, just use common sense when you're carrying your weapons and, uh, to wear out of sight, out of mind. And, uh, you know, if something would happen and you were going to help save somebody or something, and that element of surprise is on your side. I'll go in, like, work it out, I'll get off my, so far. Okay, uh, we had 1,043 law reports, eight citations issued, one ordinance violation, six warnings, one personal injury accident, 51 property damage accidents, no fatalities, and 104 arrests. And if you go over and look at our budget for this month, uh, we had, uh, we've been in the overtime, and, uh, um, if you look down, Fran, our fuel consumption's down.
Very good.
And, uh, so we're, we're, our guys are really, really watching it and all this.
Yeah, your, your overall cost is down to $186,153.82, lowest it's been in a long time.
So I think, uh, I think it's working, you know, what's been suggested, and hopefully, uh, that'll take care of things for this year and maybe, uh, maybe next, I don't know. Any questions for anybody?
But Dave, just thanks to you and, and all your staff for the, the overtime.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Street Department, David?
We too have, uh, used less fuel this last month, too.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
This last month, we've used less fuel. Our fuel was down some.
I had a little bit of overtime in DOT. Is that because of the holiday or truck price? Okay, $93,753.22 is what it cost to actually, your department, yes, last, uh, last time, and that's, uh, that's good. We've set a date yet for the free large trike day end.
We're going to talk about that.
We're talking about that.
Okay.
Any other questions? I do want to say on behalf of the Street Department, you know, Phil's been off on medical leave, uh, I don't know, a month and a half, and I promoted Chris Lucas in there temporarily, and we have done just great. We've got him, just...
Done a good job, Dave.
It's fine. Everything has worked out.
Good kid.
It was a good decision, and I have asked, uh, I haven't talked to Phil directly, but I talked to Bonnie, and I think Phil has agreed to, now Chris to, if Board of Works approves, to be his assistant when he comes back to work. I want Phil to come in here and look like a dog, I want him to have some help. All that stuff is heavy work, and I think the two would make an excellent pair. He's proved himself to me, I'll tell you. We have gave him five days of, uh...
Training.
Training, and put him to work and run the whole show.
Really?
He's done a good job.
We've all learned a little bit from this process.
Why don't Phil do that?
In two weeks, if...
Two weeks.
Third of June if the doctor releases.
Places again.
Any questions for the Streets Department?
Thank you, Matt.
We're going to, uh, when Phil gets back, we're going to get the blacktop machine out and I'm going to attempt to do the blacktopping ourselves with our own machine. Because we just can't afford to contract it out. We're going to try. I'll, I'll take a street tip.
Some streets in.
Bad shape.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna attempt it. Uh, I told David to prepare to have other people to cut grass because it takes five people to run the blacktop machine and we're no blacktops. Transfer station, wonder if we got anybody here in the overtime?
You have my report. Do you have any questions? I would be more than happy to answer them. And if you don't, I, I need to touch on what Fran had stated about our big trash. Anybody having questions?
No, I'm, uh, he doesn't have any overtime either.
No, we don't allow it. Uh, if I may, in the past, we've been afforded the opportunity to have what we refer to as heavy trash. Our cost at the transfer station, that's around ten thousand dollars. David's people are tied up for about a month with packer trucks, dump trucks, loaders and backhoes. Due to financial constraints of the city, I asked the mayor if we could not do that this year. And he and Julie talked about the finances and said, we can't do it, but however, the mayor suggested that we have what we refer to as a free Friday and a free Saturday morning. What that means is if you live in the city of Connersville within the city limits, you have proof of residency. You can bring one pickup truckload of waste to the transfer station. You cannot bring tires, uh, refrigerant appliances or construction waste. And we uh, we've had the free Friday in the past and the mayor suggested that we do a Saturday morning also. Give us four hours for those that don't get off working time through the week to uh, to come by. And that's what I would like to do, Mayor, uh, May thirtieth and the thirty-first, if that's okay with you. I know it won't make everybody happy and I understand that, but we're, we're, we're still trying to offer a partial service.
Uh, I'd like to counsel to, tell me what they think of it. They uh, represent a district, thirty and thirty-one, okay with you? That would have been the traditional uh, Memorial Day, Memorial Day's the twenty-sixth, so it's off of that.
What do you estimate the cost of, of that?
If, if, when we do that, I, this is a shot, uh, I'm going to say maybe two thousand dollars at above what, what our normal fee is. Because like I said, it's, it is just city residents because that's who pays for it. Again, no construction waste, no tires, no refrigerant appliances.
But if we're spending ten thousand?
Well, the reason, when I said ten, okay, is it, we were picking up the whole town and the whole town was a dump for a month, David? And then that was just my disposal cost and David had costs. With loaders, backhoes, extra people and we don't, we don't have it. It's that simple. And that's why I say the mayor suggested a day and a half.
I think that's great. I think maybe even, I think we ought to think about maybe once in the fall as well.
Well, that's, we, we did that in the past, Connie. We would do, we did it in the spring and we did it in the fall and it all goes back to our finances.
Right.
But uh, is that okay, Mayor?
That's fine. Anything else for Tom? I want to give the utility report in order. We're beginning the month with nine hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and forty-seven cents. And after paying the bills, we had nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seven cents. And uh, I guess I could brag a little bit. That's far cry from what it was five, six years ago. We're operating well into the black. We didn't have to ask for a water or sewer rate increase this year. We are going to have all of the meters in by September probably. We continue to work about two, two hours a day overtime to get those meters in because we know just as soon as we get the meters in, our costs are going to drop down and our revenue is going to go up. In the sewer, we began the month with a four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five ninety-seven and we ended with five hundred and, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and eleven fifty-nine. In stormwater, we uh, began with one million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents. And we ended with one million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, ninety-four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And that sounds like a lot of money, but we've got a stormwater project going that we have to pay out of there and we've got another small stormwater project right behind it. So any questions on utilities?
Yep, Mr. Mayor?
I still don't have a utility director hired. I have talked to two or three, but have interviewed none.
That's what I was going to ask.
I have a question.
None have come for an interview.
Why don't we get that report in our packet anymore? We used to get that report.
You know, I don't know the answer to that, Nancy. I thought she put it in everybody's packet. Um, I can see that you get it.
Thank you.
Transfer station, we already talked about that. Fire department.
In the month of April, we've had a hundred runs, two hundred and ninety-six, twenty-eight hours on emergencies, eighteen inspections, nine investigations, ninety-five hours of training, estimated da, property damage around forty-two thousand. I don't think we've had much overtime. I had FLSA, which is different. Was there any question?
What does your FLSA run probably run for?
Um, it varies anywhere. Um, we hit the twenty-one day period that we're figured on and uh, that's about seven, eight hundred for that twenty-one day period. We had a double hit on that one this month. It happens every once in a while. Your periods overlap and the two pages. Um, as far as Phil being all, Phil met with uh, me and Captain Gattenger before he went on sick leave and Captain Gattenger's been taking care of our trucks and walking everything, doing a real good job keeping everything running for us. We're looking forward to Phil getting back.
Any questions for the fire chief?
The cost of operating the fire department during April, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, very thin. Yours is down too, Troy. Congratulations to you.
Yeah, I had a little bit of overtime. I uh, my son experienced a fire at his house. I can't remember the date.
First week of May.
First, okay, uh, he woke up about two-thirty in the morning and uh, with the air conditioner running, one of those eighty degree days we had, you know, when you only had one or two. But uh, thought that he smelled smoke and he thought that apartment house over on Eighth Street was on fire. So at two-thirty, he went over to look and see. He thought the kids had got it on fire. It wasn't. So he laid back down on bed and then he thought he heard it raining on the air conditioner. They have a window air conditioner built through the wall in the bedroom. And uh, got up and uh, walked around, he looked at the neighbor's house and finally felt the wall and the wall was hot. And so he was embarrassed to call the fire department, but he called the two-one-one number and told them that they better send a fire truck over there if something was wrong. And when they got there, he took them upstairs and they broke a hole in the wall and the fire burst out. It had been burning for how many hours?
Oh, probably two, three.
It was going in his own house, but it's a brick house and it was encapsulated in there. And uh, your damage about forty-five, fifty thousand dollars was right. They uh, he got out of the house, he got the kids out of the house immediately when he thought there was something wrong. And uh, the fireman came over there and they worked about three hours. And uh, the, it's a three-story house and the damage was, for that big a house, about ten rooms, the uh, damage was minimal. He's still not back in the house, probably won't be for another two months, but uh, they did, uh, they got that fire out. Nobody was injured and you did have to call some extra firemen.
Yeah, very fortunate. It got in between the floors, it happened between floors. Got in and ran up into the wall. A lot of insulation slowed it down, but if, if Chris wouldn't have woke up, we would have had a very unfortunate, very fortunately he woke up.
So anyway, I appreciate what they did over there. Uh, Chris said that when he walked upstairs with them to show the battalion chief where the wall was hot and when they got it, the battalion chief broke into there, the fire started blazing. He said, I'm out of here. And he got out of there and they went up the back stairway with their air packs and two flights of steps with the hose. He said, man, that's a hard job. He's out. Glad we don't have to do that. So, oh, we appreciate you, we really do. You don't think so sometimes, but we do. Any questions of the fire chief?
Yeah, thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Troy. Cable TV, Conner, Connersville, three.
Hello. Uh, for the month, we had nine hours, eighteen minutes of eating production, six hours, forty-six minutes of original production. Uh, that included the primary candidate forum, which we produced live. Uh, that was fun. Then we also have the new show, uh, Homegrown Health, which just started and uh, like I mentioned before, that plays weekdays uh, at five-thirty. Uh, so uh, it's, it's pretty interesting. It's actually the garden doctor's son. Uh, he and his wife, and they travel around the country actually and tell people how to live a healthier life. And the first show, I learned something, so it's pretty good. I encourage everyone to watch that. Uh, and of course, so we have a garden doctor. Garden doctor is back live as well. And uh, he will be live this coming Monday at seven P M. So if you have gardening questions, tune in, give him a call. See if you can stump the garden doctor. That's always fun. Nobody has yet. So uh, something else I wanted to bring up, we're only about a month away from the Soapbox Derby. It's called the Lions Downhill Derby. We changed the name because it's the Lions Club that's now running that. Uh, it's a combination of all the Lions Clubs in the area, Connersville, Everton and Liberty. And as well as the Everton Fire Department, which is also, it's going to be on Ziegler Road, uh, June eighteenth through the twenty-second. And uh, if anybody has new questions, the website is lionssdownhildurby.com. Any questions?
John?
Yes?
Good job on the program.
Oh, thank you.
Good job.
And we're also going to run a special program on the sixth, is that right?
Yes, Friday.
Friday the sixth, we will have the people from Wayzetta in here. They will be on the program and on the seventh, we'll be having an open house. We're not really advertising it yet, but uh, I'm going to tell you folks about it. The host is going to be the Economic Development Group. The press will be allowed in there early to talk to the people and look through the building. I told you we were anxious to eat in there. And uh, so that's coming up, but we will have that show the night before and we'll have two or three people on it. Again, I want to thank Fran. Fran's done the last two or three Connersville speaks. He does a wonderful job. I love, I love to watch it after the fact. My daughter's been in, she's a senior and she's been doing so many things. I've had to be off on Thursdays. Fran's been running the shows and he really does a great job. Uh, he missed his calling. He should have been, uh, letterman.
Tell me.
Right. Well, I appreciate John.
Have anybody here seen him on those programs? Don't you? Do you think he's done a wonderful job? I enjoy watching him and the way he makes it go.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity that John has given me to do it, so.
Happy, happy. I'm glad you brought that up. I'll make sure, if you watch us at seven P M. on June sixth, uh, Friday night.
That ought to be a real good program.
I'm excited to go out and see uh, the changes they made out there. Uh, last time I was there, they were deconstructing everything. It was going to be a huge difference.
I hope to get you in there on the sixth so you can get some pictures to.
Let people see it. Any other questions?
Thank you, John.
Old business. Anybody got any old business?
I do, Mayor. I just want to run my team old and if you've got a yard or something, uh, this grass is growing up on it, to give us a call to let us know. I do uh, have a couple of my officers out there spotting yards, we're taking pictures and they're bringing the addresses and the pictures in and we are sending out letters. So be a little patient because by the time we get the letters back and everything else, I mean, the grass is probably going another foot. But uh, but since we get uh, these letters in and, and people start getting their grass grow, or we have to start going or whatever, it'll, it'll be getting cut. I just want to bring it up to, if you've got a yard in your neighborhood, call myself or Dennis and uh, report it to us. If you don't get us, leave it on our answering machines and we'll make sure we get out there and take a look at it and get a picture of it with the letter sent out.
I get about a daily call on the news slot. Are you working on it?
Yeah, we, we've sent a letter to the news slot. Only thing, only address we had was that address and we're just kind of curious where that mail's going, so.
The law only says we have to send it to the last known address.
That's what we did. So, and we've got a ton of letters going out, so. And I'm, I'm getting the calls on the trash and dilapidated buildings, you know, and all this type of thing, so we're on it as much as we can be, so.
I warned the Streets Superintendent today that he's going to have a rash of what to do to shore it.
He will. Thank you.
Anything else under old business?
Yeah, I got something.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, John, where are we at with that uh, trail bed up in the north end town?
Well, let's see, Kenny brought in some deeds for me to look at and we talked to Jane Beaver while Kenny was in my office. And she apologized for not uh, getting the work done as quickly as possible, but promised that she would get it done within a reasonable period of time. I think that's a fair.
How long, how long's it been now in the street?
Yeah. Anyhow, she's still working up.
Kenny, you want to come up and talk about what we talked about today or do you want to keep that for a while?
We're just, we're going to work on a little bit further.
Okay, we got some other things going on trails. We got some really good news today, I think. And we got some things cooking. We got a committee working and we're going to collaborate with the two or three other counties and we've got some good, good things going. You'll be excited to hear about it. All right, we're down to miscellaneous business. Nancy, what do you have? What's good up there in your district? Anything?
Lot of traffic.
Lot of traffic. Oh my, tell me about it. I can't hardly get out of thirty-seventh. Tom, what do you have?
Yes, I do have something.
Good.
Late breaking news. May seventeenth, Saturday, Connersville High School golf team participated in a uh, golf tournament at Brookville. There was eight teams, forty young men, and Connersville's team came in third. And a kid from Connersville uh, was low medalist, his name was Chandler Creach. I just want, I know his grandpa. Why don't you share that with your folks?
I got to tell you something better than that. I know his grandpa.
Anyway, we're very proud of him.
Yeah, you got it right, dude.
Thank you.
And he's graduating from high school this year.
Yes.
So he's a busy young man.
Yes.
Debbie, what do you got for us? You got something up there in the middle of the city?
Nothing.
Everything's, what, how about the neighbor across the street? How's that going?
Oh, well, he's traveled.
And Gabe, tell us about your flower sale.
Well, it was a little cold, um, but it's okay now. Uh, but it's beautiful out today and it looks like the rest of the week should be. So I encourage everybody to get outside and enjoy the weather because it's beautiful.
Gabe uh, helped us get some of our flowers outside. He uh, he allowed us to come up and buy some that was left up there. We got it planted over there and over here and over there. It looks pretty nice. It's a little young yet, but we're putting the miracle brood to her. She won't take home.
It'll grow well and fine.
Yeah.
Well, if it stays warm.
Fran?
What will be the hours on May thirtieth for the transfer station to be open?
It'll be from eight till four-thirty on the thirtieth and eight till eleven-thirty on the thirty-first.
Okay.
Thank you, Fran.
Connie?
Um, well, um, things are looking up out Canyon Parkway. Um, my street, we had an awful lot of houses that were empty. Just saw a new neighbor moving in the other day. Um, another house got remodeled. I would have loved to have gone through it, but it was always raining when I went by and see a for sale sign, so hopefully somebody's going to keep taking care of it till it gets sold. It looks really good and another one down the street getting remodeled and so, maybe a change.
Well, I uh, I had the privilege tonight to go up and uh, the company introduced me to the new Goodwill employees. And uh, uh, it was a real interesting, that Goodwill hires handicapped people to run their stores. I wasn't aware of that. I thought Goodwill, you just bought really good, real stuff, you know? It's going to open tomorrow morning at seven o'clock and the Economic Development Director and myself, they've asked us to be up there to greet the people as they come in the first day. And uh, man, I think it's packed with stuff. And uh, they said, are you interested in anything? I said, yeah, I like to buy really, really used bib overalls. And when I work in my garden and I think that John Baker does the same thing, you can put those dudes on. If they're really worn out, they don't pour or tug. They keep you cool and you can wear a T-shirt. Uh, my wife says, take them off at the farm. You don't look good. I don't really care how I look. How about you, John? Do you wear bib overalls?
Oh, I've got two pairs.
Well, I want, there's a couple pair on the rack up at Goodwill and I got my eye on them. They're really worn thin. They'll be really cool. But I'm telling you, you want to buy some name brand stuff and help out some people that are handicapped, twenty and I think out of the twenty, eighteen or seventeen of them are Connersville people. And the manager of the Goodwill store is Jeff Locke's daughter. It used to sit right down there on the city council, about where Debbie sits. She is the manager. She's a two thousand and six graduate of Connersville High School. Came back to manage that store. She's very proud. And uh, I want all the councilmen to try to stop in there in the next couple of weeks and take a look and congratulate them because that's a great thing. And you get a lot of nice stuff for your kids and you get name brand stuff there for about a third of what you pay them to go with. Yeah. That's, and listen, if you got something that you're a little chubby for, you know, you won't fit it anymore.
Who are you looking at me?
He was.
Okay.
Maybe you lost weight and you want to donate it. They got a place over there on the left where it says donations. You take it in there. That helps everybody. So uh, that's going to be a big thing tomorrow morning. Clerk Treasurers reported. Anybody want to ask the Clerk Treasurer anything?
No, I don't have any questions.
That's what I thought.
Boy, I wish I could think of a question.
Maybe I can think of an answer.
We're glad to have you with us tonight. Lisa Toler, the first deputy of the birth office, filling in for Julie tonight. I need, we need to start police negotiations. Their contracts due the end of the year and I, they have told me they're not. Their contracts due the end of the year, and I, they have told me they're not gonna negotiate if they don't have a council people negotiating. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm not negotiating. So, Mr. President, someplace you gotta find me a negotiation team to negotiate with the police department.
We'll try it.
Okay. If I could have it in the next two weeks, that'd be fine. Who's your vice president?
Tom, I believe.
Fran, you and I had negotiated with the police, I think, four or five years ago. I was talking to Councilman Nobby prior to the meeting, and he may be able to do that. He may be able to do that, represent council.
Gabe?
Depending on whether things are what.
We can set it to meet your schedule. I think, I don't think that'd be a problem.
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
I mean, I may have some things that may not work there, so.
Okay. What are you shooing about?
Ask if she wanted to. Guess that he would.
I'm so tickled that Gabe wants to do it.
I don't know if wants to.
Yeah, it is obligation.
Okay.
I'm glad you're obligated.
Public forum. Public forum. Three times, public forum at the last of the meeting. Oh, here comes public forum.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I just got a few questions on...
Wait a minute, give us your name and your address.
Jack Furman, 1020 Beach, Connersville. Wanting to know why I was singled out on a parking issue at my house. I don't know if the chief has a personal vendetta against me personally, or against the vehicle, or what it was, but I've got pictures all up and down my street of people parked. I've lived there for 15 years and never had an issue with parking, but yet, one day last week, Chief Counselor sends an officer to my house to ticket one particular car. He's informed, "There's several cars up through here." He said, "Don't worry about them, you take care of that one."
Who gave you the ticket? What officer?
It wasn't a ticket. It was just an orange sticker.
What did that orange sticker do to you?
Says that I was breaking a law.
But you didn't get a ticket?
But I was the only one, I was the only one up there that it was done to. I've got pictures of all up and down the street.
Who put that orange sticker on your car?
Officer Bolos. By order of Chief Counselor.
Don't have an expired, unexpired spot, please?
No. No, everything's, everything's good on it.
Well, this isn't a place where we have a trial. This isn't a place where we address tickets.
I can answer your question, Mayor.
I don't mind. Would you get up and answer that question?
Jack, your car was parked on the wrong side of the street, and yours stood out very plainly. So that's why you were given not a ticket, but a...
Orange sticker, I don't know. It's not a ticket.
No, it's not. It's to tell you to park it correctly.
And it has been. But what I'm saying is, I parked there for 15 years and never had a problem.
Do you wanna show?
We've always parked on the wrong side of the street.
Yeah, I can pass the tickets.
Yeah, show the council you've...
Yes, I've always, I've always parked backwards.
Well, don't do it anymore. Next time, you get a ticket.
If you would like to pass those down. And this one here, Mayor, is the one right up from your place, showing that the sidewalk's almost completely blocked all the time, and it's never anything done about it. But we've parked up and down Beach Street like that for as long as I've lived here. Never had an issue.
There aren't any curbs up there, are there?
You what?
There aren't any curbs.
No, there's nothing.
I didn't think so.
And block the sidewalk, though.
That's the only place you got to park. It's just the same way on 8th Street. It's the only place, only, only we don't have to get clear up and block the sidewalk like on 8th Street, but we still have to get real close to the sidewalk for even on it at some point.
Counselor, you wanna address the issue?
I'm not a policeman, Your Honor.
I know, but the police work for us, and do you want them to enforce parking on the sidewalk?
I want, I want the Connersville Police Department to do their job, enforce the laws.
But do you want them to pick and choose, or do you want them to do it evenly for everybody? All the citizens? Or do you want them to single out just Jack Furman?
No, I don't, look, I don't have a dog in a fight, okay?
Yes, you do, because you're their boss. You're the dog's boss.
Well, a police officer, I know, I was taught when I was 16, you don't park on the wrong side of the street, okay? Now, if someone got caught or got ticketed, I got nothing to do with that, buddy.
Oh, I understand that.
I got nothing to do with that.
But it's the only place to park.
Jack, let me ask you, in your own mind, did you break the law when you parked like that?
No. Because like I've said, I've parked there for years. I think what it is, is it actually wasn't my vehicle. I let a friend of mine park his vehicle there, and I think that's where the issues come in, because who, who the vehicle belonged to. Because the officer even told him there's other vehicles. Counselor said, "Don't worry about it. Just take care of that one."
I don't believe that.
Okay, I'm not gonna sit here and have court. This is no place for it. We appreciate the complaint, and I will look into it in the morning. I think it's my responsibility. Thank you so much. But the rest of the CDs, but here you're picked. Wait a minute, let me put the...
Pass me down to the president.
I do appreciate you putting the club with them down on the bottom, because I think it's after a meeting, you have more questions after than you were done, and I appreciate that. See you later.
Nancy, if you want to pass that one back around for everybody, that's 8th Street. Well, we're on 8th Street, but that's a rough place, but we do be sure that they don't block the sidewalk. People can walk up and down that sidewalk.
But we're gonna enforce it, it needs to be enforced citywide.
Oh, it will be.
Instead of just my, just my house.
It will be.
Okay. Anything else under public forum while they're viewing these pictures? Not appearing.
If the police department gives out a ticket, have they explained where that money goes to? Does that come all through the city?
Right. It depends.